Well, welcome. Tonight, we're going to start talking about the future of our kids and who should lead it. There's four people this year asking for your vote. As always, I'll never ask you to vote for a specific person, but I will beg you to get out, get to know the candidates and pick one that you believe has the same values as you do. It may be the same as mine, it may be the same as others, it may be different, but the key is, this is the future of our kids. I mean, we joke around, any of the parents who've had kids in high school, you get an hour if you're lucky a night to be with them before they're off doing something. The choice you make for school committee is going to dictate six to eight hours a day of your children's lives. I don't know of any other position so critical as school committee. So let's start with an introduction.
Thank you, Al. John Erickson here, candidate for Milford School Committee. I am wrapping up right now my second term on the committee. I served, I served my first term in 2014 for three years, and my second term is in 2017, I'm sorry, 2019, which wraps up this April unless I'm fortunate enough to be re-elected.
Start with the same question. You've been here before, and then we'll start and end with. John, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Well, thank you, Al. The reason, I'd like to point out what my approach has been as a member of the various committees, right? Always the school committee, but most years there's been one or two turnovers in the representation on the committee. And I think I've demonstrated from day one that my goal is to work together with the rest of the committee members for the common good of the school district. We've, we've done a lot in my, my time here. Shortly after I started, we broke ground on the New Woodland School. Fast forward a year, year and a half later, we, we transitioned Middle School East, eighth grade is to Stacy, transitioned fifth grade is to Woodland with the opening of that new school. We've replaced our superintendent, we've replaced our assistant superintendent for curriculum, we've made some other key hires such as the director of nursing. We've replaced a lot of infrastructure within the school. The technology was completely replaced maybe five or six years ago, which of course is ending that expected life cycle as well. But all this time, I've worked very proudly with every single member I've served with. We probably never, didn't always agree with each other, but what, what I'm probably most proud of is that we always worked together and we always, and that includes working with other town boards for the, for the good of the district. With all those, with those few accomplishments I, I'm proud of as a district and as a committee member, I can tell you today that the challenges we face now are greater than any of the challenges we've overcome. Not through any action or inaction of our own, but because of the circumstances that, that have presented themselves over the past few years.
So if I look for the future, what do you think the three biggest challenges you'll face are?
Well, the, the biggest, there's, there's, there's a number of course. Space is certainly in the top three challenges, right? We know that no, every school without naming all of them are at maximum capacity. We've added programming and we don't have, we can't, we can't continue to add programming without adding space. We can't add staff in any practicality without adding space. So our facilities and the, in the space, not to mention the condition of each facility is one of the biggest challenges that we face. The other, another, because there's not, it's not the other, it's another challenge is the increased student enrollment. As of today, we're at an all-time high and it's been steadily progressing, but we're at an all-time high in our enrollment. I want to say it's about forty-five hundred and sixty as of, as of the beginning of this month or as of this morning, and that's a hundred higher than it was last year at this time. And we have a couple dozen on deck at the Family Resource Center waiting to be enrolled. So the added enrollment is a challenge in, in a number of ways. Obviously the physical space considerations, but it's also that the needs of our student body have changed. As we've talked in the past, Dr. McIntyre has talked at many of the school committee meetings, our percentage of high-need students has increased in five years from, by roughly fifty percent. From forty-some-odd percent to sixty-some-odd percent of the, the student body being high needs. So that presents a number of additional inherent challenges because it takes a lot more in every way to educate a student body with forty percent versus sixty percent, not to mention the added enrollment.
Now, that's something that I think most people don't understand, because I, I was one that was always busting Kevin and Dr. Trombley before him about, you add one student a year. You know, in seventy-four, when we graduated first class out of that high school, it was two-twenty-two. A few years ago, it was two-sixty. So it's forty years and forty kids. Now, the last, I don't know, three, four years, it seems to have exploded with a couple hundred kids a year, or even this year, a hundred. But I don't think people understand that it's not just the number of kids, it's the geography each kid needs because we're shifting from typical to more specialized needs kids.
A hundred, a hundred percent. And to go, to go back to my first term, we were still more or less flat-lined on that one student per year. And that's, 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 you know, an unexpected, in the past several years, there's been an unexpected jump. But that aside, the needs of the students in our student body now are drastically different than they have been traditionally. The programmatic needs, they take more, they take more teachers, more specialty teachers, more individual student pullouts and more space. Not to mention the, the specialists and the adjustment counselors and, you know, a whole area that's indirectly associated with those needs.
Yeah, I think people forget, you say you got twenty-two, twenty-four kids in a room. We're going to add two more kids. Doesn't seem like a big deal unless those two kids each come with one-to-one supervision.
Yeah, a hundred percent. Again, the needs have changed and, you know, my area here as a school committee member is, I'm not a classroom expert. You know, I rely on our, our staff who clearly are classroom experts, but it's, you know, the challenges are just exponentially increased in, in probably every department. Maybe the most prominent or recognizable is our, is our EL program. I mean, within those high needs, the percentage of EL has increased drastically and in that program, we've, we've done our best to support it, but it needs more support now than it did two years ago. The numbers again have increased, you know, not linearly, linearly.
But when you start thinking about the English language learners, and a lot of them are coming to this country for the first time, a lot of them are starting behind in education, how do you deal with that?
Frankly, I don't know. As I said, I'm not, I'm not an educational expert, nor an administrator. I know our staff, especially, you know, our director Jen Norgianian works tirelessly on this. We've done our best to support that program with added staff, both, both mid-year this year, we, we made almost an unprecedented move of adding a, a half-year, one-time position, you know, funding internally, which in principle, I, it was difficult to embrace because we, we typically never do mid-year initiatives. But the need was so great and there was no direct impact to any town funding at that point for the half-year position that I did, I did support it. But the needs there are overwhelming and, you know, we were supporting it with this year's initiatives by adding another position, but frankly, I don't, I don't know how they manage it. And, you know, people have asked, why, why don't we add four people if we need them? Well, I knew that would probably get your attention, but that may not be practical or sustainable in terms of what the impact is to the overall budget. So it's, it's definitely a balance.
Well, it's hard because from a municipal point of view, we go and we listen to the school committee, and the school committee will tell us we've added so many new kids and, I mean, I think the percentage now is like fifty percent of the kids get free lunch and breakfast or something along that line.
It's, it's close.
You know, and it's amazing.
Close, you, look, again, I'm sorry.
No, 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 but it's amazing to me because when I look around Milford, some of the towns that border us, they're at fifteen percent. So when people start comparing what we have to do for our student population compared to some of the towns around us, you can't compare them.
There's no direct comparison to any, I think, any of our surrounding towns or, or any of the towns that the state compares us to on the, on the MASC website or the DESI website. We're one of the more unique communities and fortunately, that's been recognized, you know, within the chapter seventy-eight, which is probably something we'll get on to at, at another point, but communities like Milford are unique. The neighboring communities are not facing the challenges that we are, and they're certainly not facing the increases in challenges that we are.
Now, in your mind, what's bringing all this new, all these new students, all this new draw of population to Milford? That was good?
It's a, it's a combination, Al. We're certainly getting an influx of immigrants. Milford is a welcoming community. We have, we've always been and we still are a community based on immigration, and there's opportunity for, for families to come here, have employment and have, have a place to live with family or, or otherwise with connections. But it's also our, you know, the, the whole country is sort of in a housing boom, but Milford is, is bringing in a lot of, has a lot of new housing that's been coming online recently and will continue to come online over the next three years. You know, we're getting, we're getting some new students in the Bear Hill Project, the new Bear Hill Project, which is maybe at, I don't know, not even fifteen percent of its, you know, build-out. And we're already, our transportation department is already sending busing down there to pick up kids. And that's not unexpected in new development, but it is unexpected in that type of development, which is called a planned residential development, which is limited, which is like a Walden Woods and like some of the, you know, the preserve at, at White Wood Estates and some of the others, where traditionally, they don't draw school-aged children. Two-bedroom, brand-new condos typically don't fill our school systems up or contribute, that's not the right word, but they don't contribute highly, but we're already getting a number of students at this new development.
In two-bedroom condos?
Yeah.
Is that just because the costs are going so crazy, people can't get bigger places or?
I don't know. I know there, there's a, there's a waitlist of people, you know, in talking to the sales manager of that, that development, there's a waitlist of people waiting for units to be done and they're, they're coming, they're all coming from, they're coming from a number of towns, one at West Road being one of them, I forget the others, but there, there's a draw from that community to here. I don't really know what it is, but it's, it's, it's consistent because it's happened with three or four families out of maybe twenty occupancy permits. So that's, that's a high percentage in typical, and there's a waitlist with other families. And, you know, the, the real estate salesperson isn't asking whether or not you have kids nor, nor can they, but it's, it's an indicator that hasn't been present before. We, we traditionally haven't had, I bet if you went through Walden Woods, you wouldn't pull, in the fifteen years they've been occupied in part, and over ten in full, I bet there hasn't been more than a handful of students in the public school systems there, which are, you know, very nice two-bedroom condos. Slightly, not much different. The other, the other PID I'm referencing is single families, but it's the same, it's the same high-end two-bedroom unit.
You're right, because when you, when we thought about it, two-bedroom is either for the young, just-starting couple or the older, empty-nesting couple. You never really thought of two and three kids in the middle of that. That was always the three and four bedroom.
Yeah, and that's, that's the, sort of the inspiration for allowing what we call planned residential development is that they'll allow units to be built on, on a smaller footprint, which reduces building costs, give some open space back to the town. But the reason for these concessions or some of the justification is that they're unlikely to bring the burden of the school-aged child because it's pretty well-known that a house with one or more school-aged children is sort of a, it's a, it's a lose when it comes to, to expenses versus revenue.
Well, I remember years ago, I asked Paul Abadanza, our financial planner for the FinCom, what does it cost? For every dollar we bring in residentially, what does it cost? And he came back and he said, average a buck eighty. So for every dollar you're charging somebody for taxes on their house, it's a buck eighty. I said, well then where do we make our money? Well, commercial, it's eighteen cents on the dollar, because commercial doesn't have kids, they don't have trash, I mean, they pay for it themselves, and industrial is fourteen cents. Now, it's probably changed a little bit.
And, and, and within that, it's the houses without kids in the, in the school system, they're not losers when it comes to, to the delta on cost, cost to the schools versus tax revenue, but the ones with one, two, and three are. Not that we're building our community based on a business plan like that, but it's, it's part of the factor that went in, that goes into the zoning that allows for these, these two-bedroom units where they wouldn't otherwise be allowed.
So now we go through everything, we'll have more questions. Bottom line, somebody comes up to you and says, if I move to Milford, will my kid get a good education? What would be your answer?
One hundred percent. I don't usually repeat myself, but one hundred percent. The opportunities the kids have in Milford Public Schools are as good as any public schools and in many private schools. I know you know this well, the schools that, the top-notch schools that are top-performing students get in, they match any community around us. On top of that, I would, you know, something that's often overlooked, the students that are not top performers are getting a, I'd argue a better education than they're going to get anywhere else. And we, we, we aren't, it's not my goal to model our school just for the top performers, it's to be inclusive of all the students. From top performers down to special ed to the ones that are looking for career readiness, which we have improved upon with some, some recent programming there, and I know it's, I know it's been a goal of our high school principal to increase those, those opportunities. So your child, if you move to Milford and you're not here already, will get as good an education as, as anywhere, in my opinion. I would make that argument.
I had to agree with you because I've always said, your opinion is jaundice, you're on the school committee. Our administration works in the schools, but the total and partial opinion of the colleges. Because if they didn't think Milford students were good enough, Harvard wouldn't have accepted one, Holy Cross, Brown, Cornell. I mean, I think of the schools that our kids are getting into, and they're top-notch schools.
Hundred percent. They are going to the best schools in this country. You know, and, and some of them that may not go are being accepted.
And isn't that, that's the job of the school department in my mind?
Yes, completely. It's, it's about giving every student the best opportunity, setting them up for the best opportunity they can, they can get, and then let them choose what's best for them. But I, I think we're preparing all of our students very, very well, and it's, you know, sometimes it's lost if you stop pulling out statistics, and we've talked previously about statistics, we can make them, we can mold them to support many different arguments. The same statistics can be molded to prove.
Well, how would you answer the people who don't know the real demographics and the real test scores, but they see that Milford scores lower than a lot of the schools around them?
Well, what I would say is, and I've said this here before, I'm not a big proponent of overvaluing standardized test scores. They do indicate some certain performance on some certain day by each individual student, but we, we don't extract this data, I don't know if we can. It's sort of empirically, I would, I would argue that our top performers are performing as highly as any district around, period.
And that was what I learned when my daughter hit eighth grade. People remember Tommy Daverin. I've never run into somebody, except maybe Uncle Paul Raftery when he ran the high school, but somebody who took such pride in his kids. And I tweeted him, and I said, Tommy, why do your MCAS scores suck? The look on his face, he said, because you're ignorant. I said, okay, enlighten me. And he showed me the data where we had a very bimodal curve of results. It wasn't Gaussian, it was too Gaussian. And he said, look, if I put you in China and gave you a year or two to study to take a competency test in Mandarin, how do you think you'd do? So if you let me compare my top kids to any town around us? He took pride, he said, I'll put them up one-on-one and they will not fall.
I, I couldn't agree more, and that was my point about not putting much stock in the standardized testing, putting more, putting more faith in what the opportunities are being afforded to our graduates, and they're, they're very high, these opportunities, they really, they really are.
So now you talked about needing space. What are we going to do about space?
Well, space, the answer is, we haven't figured that out yet, right? I've sat on the facilities subcommittee in several rounds and we haven't got there, right? The easy answer, or the, the, the beginning of the explanation is that we've applied as a district to the Mass School Building Authority, MSBA, to get into their school building program. And what that is, is it's a program that if accepted, they, they, we have to fill out an extensive application called a statement of interest, and if accepted and, and it gets, comes to fruition, they will reimburse us a certain percentage of the construction costs. We fall into the demographic of sixty to sixty-two percent reimbursement. So we don't know what we're going to do, right? There's been a lot of talk of, do we build a new high school? Do we put an addition on the current high school? We won't know that answer until and unless we get into the program and do a feasibility study. Then we'll hire a team, you know, an architectural engineering firm to come in and look at the condition of the building, to look at the cost of, the cost and the implications of adding on to it, the, you know, all the existing systems, the, the structure from the foundation on up to the mechanical, electrical plumbing systems and the rest of the, the building infrastructure, and then they'll give us sort of a, a couple of options. You may knock it down and start over and it's, the projected cost is this. You may do a third, and this is a little abstract, you may do a third floor and the cost is this. You may put a wing on and the cost is something else, but they'll, they'll sort of give us our options and then we'll have to choose one and, and look for the funding. That, that's being oversimplified, but it's, that's our immediate goal with the high school. And that could take six to eight years, or that could get denied and never be accepted, and we have to be prepared for that. We have to have a Plan B, and that's only part of Plan A, is a newer renovated high school. That would only be part of it, but what are we doing with, with the rest of our facilities? There's been, there's been talk of, and it, I don't want anybody to get alarmed because we don't know if it'll happen, I don't even know if it's alarming, but of shifting Memorial from first and second grade to, I mean, from kindergarten and getting my.
K through two.
Thank you, K through two. And making it pre-K and K, and first and second go strictly to Brookside. The numbers are lower, which supports the space available at Memorial, space is a little better at, a little more at Brookside. That's something to look at, but it's not to be looked at in the short term because we wouldn't want to do that for a year or two and then make a shift. And we know that Stacy's at, at capacity, there's, there's no extra space there. So it's, it's something we're looking at, we don't have any answers. Something I have been pushing, the superintendent and the rest of my facilities subcommittee that we need to meet, and not pushing because they're not resisting, but emphasizing that we need to deal with this a little bit more frequently. And there's a lot of variables involved up in the air as we progress because there's a lot of moving targets.
Do you see a viable option of building new versus renovating?
At the high school?
Yeah. I mean, I'm assuming you're on board with the next school to be focused on is the high school.
Yes, we've, we've, we've made that clear as a district that that's our, that's our next focus. So the answer depends on what we find in the feasibility study. I've talked with people before about this. The high school was, was opened in nineteen seventy-three or seventy-two, and the first class was seventy-three.
Seventy-three, December.
Opened? Yes.
Yes, we moved in right after Christmas in seventy-three. Class seventy-four was the first class to graduate out of that building.
Do you know anyone in that class?
Yeah, I remember being part of that class.
So, so the high school is, is a reinforced poured concrete building, and the short story there is the life expectancy of that type of construction even today is fifty years.
Now, John, you know more about this than I do. Why fifty years? I mean, what goes wrong with cement?
Well, it's the combination of the cement and the steel reinforcing bars which work together to create the strength. And, you know, I don't want to mix my day job into this too much, but what happens is moisture and other elements get into the steel and at first it expands, and then it starts to corrode and, and reduces in size. And that, and, and there's spalling like that, you'll see it on the exterior walls of the high school if you look close. And so the question is, how bad is that? That'll take some sort of invasive research, they'll do core samples, and that's something for, for the engineers to do. But if, if that were stable enough to maintain and use for, for a couple more decades, personally, I see it being a much more viable option to, to renovate and add on to the high school than knocking it down completely and replacing it. But that, that's totally dependent on the, the structural evaluation.
Do you have any idea what would we do if we hadn't? When we decided to knock down Brookside, we had to build half a school by adding on to the high school, Memorial everywhere. That was for three hundred cherubs. Where would we put thirteen hundred?
I have no idea. That's one of the reasons I don't think it's knocking down the high school is a viable option unless it's the only option.
I mean, if it's the only option, you do what you have to to take care of your kids. But I agree with you, I, I have no idea where we would put thirteen hundred.
I, I don't either. I can, I can. I I don't either. I can, I can see adding on two stories, maybe even three stories on the add-ons. I don't think going up completely to a third floor is, would be completely viable. I think um selective add-ons in in strategic locations would be more viable. I also let you do the construction in phases and and keep the school open. So um frankly, no, I don't see, you know, you know, with a construction background. The and logistic, some whatever logistic background I have, how we manage knocking it down and rebuilding it. Unless you could rebuild it on a completely different area of the like we did at Woodland, but I don't know that there's physically enough space for that. Um, we just redid the parking. It seems like yesterday was probably ten years ago, maybe longer. Uh, but it's, and and then you have, you know, the rest of the space on that campus is is more close or in the wetlands. So it's, th- there's serious challenges. And um, which frankly, I think I'm 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 fairly well suited to help address. Which is part of my inspiration for wanting to stay on this committee.
And I think realistically, we have to look like you say, you can't bankrupt yourself. Go all in on every penny we can afford to do the school on one school.
No, we can't. I mean, that's, like I said, the the high school is part of plan A or it goes into plan B and we have to address the needs at the other schools. You know, Stacy, could we, there's been some discussion of if we redo the high school, do we possibly incorporate eighth grade into that facility somehow? Which would open thirty-three percent of the space at Stacy. That would go, that would go a long way to Stacy needs without talking about the facility needs that Stacy has. But that would certainly address the space issues at Stacy. Maybe the restructuring of the grades would help with the space issues at Memorial and Brookside. Maybe that in conjunction with some relatively minor additions. But things we need to, things that are that are my focus and I they listen, they're not gonna be solved tomorrow. And I'm not professing that right now, but it's, it's something that I I think myself. Um, Superintendent Chris Wilson on the Facilities Committee are are very in tune with.
Now, years ago, we had the school committee come up with a comprehensive plan. Which told us where the school committee wanted to take the ed- the educational needs and the building needs that supported it. And for a decade or so, we just followed the plan. Do you see us creating a new one?
Yeah, part of the conversation. I've been a part of them and we haven't created one. You're talking about the long range, the the title was Long Range Educational Plan.
Yes.
Which started in ninety-three or ninety-five.
Yes.
Uh, before I mentioned, Tommy Daverin was um I either the one that wrote it or the inspiration behind it or both. And certainly a big part of it. And we did follow that for for a decade. I mean, they identified needs, uh, the needs such as Woodland, which took well over ten years to come to fruition. And they were pretty much spot on with their their analysis back then. I still have my paper copy of that plan. And what I referred to a lot in my first term to try and get a sense of the history and the sort of the institutional knowledge that that might be out there. Um, but no, we don't have a firm one. We've, we've discussed some things with NASDAQ a few years ago. We we hired them as a consultant. They gave us some predictions that um I don't think were very accurate. Especially on on um uh town population and student population. But they were using the data that was available to them and they really can't deviate from the data that was available to them. But the data doesn't always support what happens next, right? With with, who knows, we we have six hundred apartments coming on Deer Street. We have another two hundred, give or take, coming on on Virch Street. And the predictions of how many students will um become enrolled in the school systems from from those places was, I I think you could count them on without taking your shoes off. I I don't think that's gonna come come to be, but they're basing their predictions on the data, historical data. And and they have to have a justification for how they come up with their 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 predictions. Where you and I can say, that's crazy, that's, that building's gonna have twenty, that eighty five is gonna have twenty. Eighty apartment unit building is gonna have twenty kids minimum. We might be more accurate than them, but they can't base
Right.
Their predictions on.
Well, they, five years ago, they would have agreed with an old man, me, who said, Kevin, why do you need space? You're adding one kid per year. And then the last five years, I mean, it's hard when people don't have a feeling for when you say you're adding two hundred kids. Two hundred some kids, that's Brookside. Or was it three hundred some? That's almost an entire Brookside or Memorial.
Well, if we take the ideal twenty kids for class, that's ten teachers. That's ten classrooms and ten teachers. We don't have either.
Now, I've heard stopgap of modular classrooms.
Yeah, it's uh, it's it's being considered right now. Um, we had an initial meeting with the Facility Subcommittee, um, which again, myself, Chris Wilson, Jen Parson. Um, Dr. McIntyre and Rob Quinn from Facilities. Um, since that meeting, Rob Quinn met with a modular company to get a sense of what would be possible, feasible, viable at both um Memorial and Brookside. And I, what I do know is that there was some uh positive insight from that meeting. But we haven't met again to find out the specifics, the specifics of what was discussed and what those possibilities are.
Now, Memorial.
So it's, I'm sorry, if I can just say, so we're in early February and that meeting should be, you know, within a week or so.
Memorial used to have modulators across the street. Would that be a logical place to put them or?
No, that's already been ruled out as an a, as a viable consideration. We we don't want anybody crossing the street. Uh, it it it's really not a safe situation. Um, we clearly need that space for parking. If you look at that lot.
Well, it was paved to be a parking lot.
And it's and it's filled every single day. I mean, if you look, there's some that aren't even parked in spaces. Um, you know, they're not, they're not blocking anything, but they're, they're improvising with their their parking. And there is some space that could be attached, uh, from what I understand. You know, based on the the interviews that our facilities director did. So there's some viable spaces that that could be um integrated to the building.
Well, you're right on town parks, so you got space you could use.
Yeah, I I think that that side might be the more challenging side, but we, again, we haven't, haven't discussed.
No, what I'm saying is there are options.
De- definitely options. And and I don't think, short term, we need an overwhelming amount of space there. So these are the moving parts that in in we, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do a one-year solution, right? Because that's, that's that's really not very pragmatic.
Too many times in the past, we've done Band-Aids, just to undo them and redo them and it causes havoc with the kids.
It does, and this is um, it it it's, it's difficult because you can't clearly see the future. You can't, you can't limit your student enrollment. You can't predict how many will enroll. And you you, we don't know, you know, what we're gonna get for aid, either on the town side or the school side. And you don't know what's gonna be embraced, as we talked about. We'd love to add four EL teachers, but
Can you afford it?
Can we afford it? And even if we could, would it be embraced, right? There's, there's more to the, to to the effort.
Now, we've avoided the subject that I was scared would take up all the election talk, COVID, COVID, COVID.
We've avoided it.
People wanna know, what's your impression of how we dealing with COVID?
How are we dealing with it? Um, as best we can is what I would say. It's, it hasn't been easy. Um, if we look at it in hindsight, it's never gonna be over, but as it, as the effects are are waning. We we realize a number of things we could have done differently and could have done more effectively from day one. But uh, nobody knew how to handle it from day one. Um, today, we still, we have a lot more information. And, you know, the topic of the news for the last three days, again, here in early February is are the mask mandates going away? They're going away in New Jersey and Maryland and I forget what other couple of states were on the news. Um, here in Mass, unless it gets extended, the mandatory mask mandate goes away on February twenty-eighth. That's the one imposed by the um Director of Education, Jeff Riley. Um, if that, if that's the case, then it, it uh, it's gonna, it's gonna push the decision to the local level. And I don't know that tonight's the night we wanna talk about that extensively, but um, we've
No, but John, on a broad brush statement, you got kids in the school system?
Um, both have progressed out, but yes, had.
My god, has it been that long since you first came on?
It has.
Oh, lord.
It has, and and as I think you know, one's, one's now a teacher at the, at the high school and um
That's, that's wild. I remember us talking about your kids in the school system. But if somebody was to say, do you feel comfortable? Now, now you graduated from two kids to forty-eight hundred kids. You feel comfortable that the forty-eight hundred kids that are ours to shepherd and protect are safe?
I think they're safe at, in the Milford Public Schools, yes. I think we've always taken the the appropriate safety measures. Um, I think the 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 results and the statistics from schools in general and especially our district. Um, our our kids were never in danger there. Um, probably were were more exposed in other environments. And, you know, I think, without getting into any one specific, I think they that in hindsight, we could have done things differently and they wouldn't have had as many ill effects as they've come out with.
But you know, I'm a great quarterback on Monday morning. I can tell you what the Patriots did wrong, running when they should have passed. It's always easy to look back and say, coulda, shoulda, woulda.
Hundred percent.
You know, but overall, you feel comfortable that we've done what we could?
I I I feel comfortable. We've done everything that we could and we've got, done a good job at it.
How about general security?
General security?
There's a lot of schools running into major discipline problems, security problems. Your mind, do we have that problem with Milford schools?
Uh, no, other than small isolated cases, no, I don't. We have um, we have two dedicated school resource offices. We have our, we have our security within um, especially the high school. And I don't think anybody, a- and and if they do, I haven't been made aware of anybody feeling unsafe in in Milford schools.
Well, I I think the best testament to that is we never hear about it.
And and I never hear about it, even as a committee member, where occasionally we're made aware of circumstances in general. We don't get specifics. But there's been, there's very, very few and very isolated. Uh, and the few we have heard about have mostly turned out to be, if not completely unfounded.
If you were made king and you had the magic wand, what would you change, improve at the school system?
Uh, I I would change our, I would increase our space and our budget. And I would add um some staffing as a result of that. I think, I don't think there's anything, I can't say of anything I would specifically change. I think everybody, um and I can't talk to every single specific employee because that's not my role and nor my exposure. But I think, I think we do a fantastic job on every level, from our administration to our teachers, to our aides. You know, we we, from our our um AP programs, again, right through the district to every, every individual need. And there's not anything, there's not anything I can say needs um specific change or or attention. I think overall, we do a great job and it's, it's um, it'd be easier to come on here and give a very specific answer of this needs to be changed and why, but I personally don't see it. I've been
Yeah, Rob Quinn should change that door.
Yeah, and that light bulb.
And that light bulb. Of course, tomorrow, you'll get a phone call saying, what light bulb and what door? Knowing him, he'll make sure that everything is done.
Uh, he's very thorough.
I remember when we first hired him, my biggest concern is that he'd realize how valuable he is and not stay.
That's, that's, that's always a concern with good, good employees, right? Town and and school side.
Now, when we start thinking about programs, you mentioned we have a broad array of programs. And we, we'd increase the funding. My understanding is the rumor coming from the state is that Milford's being targeted by the state. And we're in for some good funding increases.
Yeah, that that's my understanding, right? We've, we've spoken about this in the past. That, you know, chapter seventy is the, is the funding for each, each school district based on the state, on the state level. And that a few years ago, I forget that exactly which year. Um, we've always noted in Milford that our needs are not typical or average to the state. Our demographic is different, as are some o- some other districts, but really none neighboring. Framingham has a different need. Brockton has a different need. And they revamped the chapter seventy formula, which I really can't quantify exactly. Um, but they've recognized the needs of districts like ours that we had some inequities or or a lot of inequities. So they've re- they've revised the funding um with essentially a five-year rollout, was my understanding at the time. And I think we're seeing the benefits of that over the past few years. I think it was twenty twenty, we got an increase that we weren't expecting. Um, we got a, a big increase, I think, in twenty twenty. We got a modest increase in twenty
Twenty-one.
Uh, twenty-two was a modest, right? Twenty-one was a big one. I'm getting my dates confused. And and um, this year, the projection is um an increase that no- nobody saw coming.
No.
Right? Our chapter seventy going up, if you're rounding off, six or seven million from thirty-two to thirty-nine. And that's, that's based on the enrollment essentially two years prior. And I know you all know that now. So FY twenty-three, chapter seventy-eight is based on our enrollment as of October thirty-first two thousand twenty-one, which was a down year because of the the COVID pandemic and travel restrictions. So we were really worried, you know, in our first budget meeting, we had a projection of um a five percent increase in the chapter seventy money. And we thought that was safe, but we didn't think it was, we didn't think it was optimistic, but we weren't optimistic that it would be much higher. When it came out basically a month later, uh, and it came out to seven million um, or six million, rounding off, I forget which way we'd round off to. But I I think everybody in town, including the the finance director, the members of the finance committee, the members of the school committee and school administration were all um essentially shocked and certainly surprised and pleased. Because it certainly justified some of the initiatives we were really trying to put forward, which which may not have been affordable otherwise, but certainly we feel were needed. And that, it's again, as you know, hasn't gone through the entire process, but we're, we're optimistic that we'll have the support of the town with those, you know, with this budget and those initiatives. But the, 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 again, the aid was, the increase in aid was unexpected, very um, very rewarding and exciting, or whatever the right word is. And the good thing is that it's, it looks to follow that path, at least for next year. You know, again, based on the five-year rollout and next year's um enrollment is gonna be higher than the enrollment this one was based on. And though, I guess another important part of that is the high needs numbers, which they're recognizing our needs increasing because of those numbers.
Well, it looks like Milford is right in the heart of the perfect storm for financing. The legislature has said they wanna target towns which have increased special needs population and demand, uh, increased lower income and increased ELL. Sounds like three hits for Milford.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's our demographic, right?
And you know, it's, it's tough when you stand And you know, it's, it's tough when you're standing in front of the school committee. And Kathy and Kevin and the whole crowd give you all these logical explanations for what they need. And you sit there and say, yes, we can't argue, yes. Well, we need an extra five million dollars. Uh, um, yeah. Yeah, like this year. I mean, I'll admit, I was scared to death when you were asking for six point something million incremental.
I may have seen your reaction on that Saturday morning meeting. Did not go unnoticed.
It was like, oh my god, and I can't argue the merits of what Kathy is proposing. You know, we have so many kids incremental here, we need a teacher for that. And some of it is unfunded mandates. You really don't have a choice. Boy, seven million extra dollars, the coming this upcoming fiscal year would certainly help that.
Oh, it it essentially justifies it or supports it. Um, I think the justification comes from within the district, as you just indicated. We we have that need, but do we have that means? Unfortunately, with this, with this amount of aid, we do, we we should. I mean, again. I I tend to talk quickly because I get, my mind gets racing and I I think about the possibilities and the effects. This is not guaranteed at this point, but this is just one of the next several projections. We won't know until like July first, hopefully. Exactly what our final number of aid is, but it's um, with this projection, it seems.
But it sure is better to be thinking it's gonna be seven and I've heard rumors that maybe it could be a little better. Than if they were starting at four, we'd be sweating.
We would, and we'd, we'd be looking at pulling back some initiatives, you know, we. We have to be mindful of what what is affordable and sustainable and and what the alternative effect is on all the taxpayers.
Now, we've got a couple minutes left. Question always comes up. Milford's done very well in the school system to help one end of the special needs groups. And probably both ends, the very high, the kids who are at the top ten percent and need to be stimulated. The kids who need help driving to the middle. But the question always comes up, what do you do? With people like my father? Put him in an organic chemistry class? No. Give that man a tool. He was a dang artist. You know, so. Blackstone Valley was supposed to be that outlet when we were kids. If you were going to college, you went to Milford High. If you wanted to be a tradesman, you went to BVT. But the last few years, and you can't take anything away from Dr. Fitz, he's built a wonderful academic institution. Kind of like a magnet school. But what do you do for people? Look who I'm talking to. What do you do for people who wanna be craftsmen, electricians, plumbers?
Well, I mean, look who you're talking to, but that was not for my intent. I just fell into that after um, after college. I don't, you know.
No, but you understand.
But no, I of all people understand it completely. Um, you know, for those that don't know, my father. Owned an electrical contracting company growing up, which I still own today. And he had a number of employees that came from BVT. They came out of there. Um, some are still friends to this day. Great tradesmen, great workers, great, great electricians. Um, and we saw that fall off, you know, that that sort of pool fall off in the. Mid to late nineties is, you know, because I've had some employees from BVT. And it just seems you don't, you don't get those interested in coming out of the trade school and going into the trades. Um, I think, you know, I've advocated for doing more with the trades. At Milford High School. Um, I know we have, you know, Josh, our principal Josh Otlin has done a good job. He's added the. The Building Trades Program and the Facilities Program, so he he's got the initiatives started and continuing. But this comes down to um, space on one level, staff on another level, so it's. The needs are, in order to fulfill. This, these programs are the same as the needs in the rest of the district, space and staff. But I I do think he's put a ton more focus on career readiness than we've had in the past. And I I think, I think we're seeing positive effects from that. Of course, it takes, you know, a number of years to see those, those effects.
John, we're coming to the point where I'm gonna ask you my favorite question. I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Well, I would, Al, I would just ask that uh you look at what I've done on the committee um for the last six years. Um, how I've, how I've handled myself, how I've handled um, the needs of the town and the public and how I've worked with. Other committee members. Um, and frankly, judge me on what you think I've done and how well you think I've done it. And I hope I've done it well enough to earn your vote for a third term on the school committee.
We've got a few seconds left. I have to ask you, why are you signing up for this? I mean, when you think of the enormous salary you get, zero, and all the work. And all the suggestions you get from town people, what drives you?
It it's, it's it's really a simple answer right now, Al. As I said earlier, I think I need to greater now than when I started. And I don't think it's because the district or any of the committees I've been on have underperformed or done. Anything that they look back on Monday morning and say we should have done differently. The needs that we couldn't control and couldn't foresee. Are just greater, greater now than in any of my six years there. And I think I'm, I I I feel like I can't abandon this cause. I I think I have a lot, I think I've learned a lot in six years and and have a lot to offer for these, to to help solve these challenges and. If we were in, if we were on cruise control and I thought everything was wonderful, I'd. I'd certainly have said the six years was rewarding enough to step back and and, you know, let somebody else. Um. Run with it, but I I I think the needs are greater now than before through, again, through no. No improper action or or oversight on on any of our committees or administrators part. And that's, that's really the simple driving force, that it's um, there there's more need now and I I. I hope to help be a part of the solution.
Well, it's hard to believe that six years ago, you first came on the show.
I don't wanna correct your math, but it was seven years ago.
Seven years?
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. It was, it was eight years ago.
Oh, wow.
So not that I wanna draw negative attention, but I I didn't win my first campaign. Then I served three. Then I was not on for a year and then I served another three. So it was, it was fourteen. And yeah, it it does at times seem like yesterday.
I do thank you for everything you've done and look forward to seeing what you'll do in the future.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time tonight and I appreciate your faithful listeners.
All six.
Viewers, viewers.
So to our six loyal viewers, I wanna say thank you for joining us tonight. Again, I'm serious when I say I've never asked anybody to vote. For a specific candidate, but I'll always beg you, one, get out and vote. And two, there are so many ways to get to know the candidates, whether it be this show, whether it be debates at the Senior Center. Um, the high school, which I love the idea of getting young voters involved that are just out of high school. Um, get to know the candidates, get to know what they stand for, who they are. And then pick one that best fits your vision. And as always, may God bless, may tomorrow be a better day than today. Thanks for joining and thank you, sir.
Thank you.